Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 26, 2015 Planning Commission Meeting of the City of Huntsville. I am Gary Whitley, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, and I will lead the meeting tonight. We will start with introductions. We are pleased to welcome our new supernumerary member, Ms. Donna Hendricks, on the end.
Hi, my name is Donna Hendricks.
Hey, I'm Les Tillery.
Jenny Robinson.
And Kyle Collins.
Vince Dickens.
Steve Strickland.
Peggy Richard.
Kimberly Battle.
Lieutenant Jeffrey Rice.
Kelly Scrimsher.
Michelle Jordan, Planning Department.
And we also have a representative from the Legal Department, Ms. Claudia Anderson, who is here in the room. We will start, I will call for the adoption of minutes from our April 28, 2015 meeting.
Moved or approved?
It's been moved properly second, are we ready for the question? All those in favor of approval, adoption of the minutes, please say aye.
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 All those opposed have the same right. Motion carries, it is ordered. We will start and follow the agenda as printed with the public hearings. When I call for the public hearing, if you would like to speak on that public hearing, you are free to go to either of the microphones to give comment. We will start with item number one, public hearing, Cambridge subdivision Phase Two. Is there anyone present to speak for the Cambridge subdivision Phase Two? Seeing none, we'll continue to item number two. The Cove, second addition, re-subdivision of lots nine F and nine E of a re-subdivision of lots nine D of re-subdivision of lot nine B of a re-subdivision of lot nine of the Cove and re-subdivision of lot ten of the Cove. Is there anyone here to speak on item number two? Again, you're free to go to either of those mics. Public hearing is closed on item number one, and so we are taking public hearing comments for item number two. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Larry and Rebecca Benningfield, and we're at 588 Ripple Lane.
Yes, and your comments.
We have a set of covenants, and I realize I was told since I got here that that doesn't seem to be an issue, but I wanted it stated that in our covenants, it states that no tract can be subdivided without, in a such configuration as may be approved by the Architectural Control Committee, and there's no approval for these new lots from anyone that I have talked to in the Cove. There's like twelve owners, about twelve, and nobody wants this. The lots are too narrow, and there's too many of them, and we don't mind, the subdivision is just not right. And then we also have word that the dedicated land trust part, there's a sixty-foot easement that goes up our property line, and we bought our property there as a residential piece of property in a residential neighborhood, and we feel like converting all sixty feet along our property line to a public use should not happen. We, you know, that's just, we'll have people up behind our house and all along the side of it, and that's not what, we bought the property as residential, and it should stay that way, it should not go public.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak to item number two?
Anything else you wanted to say? Yeah, and we feel like these restriction covenants are for our protection, and so far they're not protecting us because the public is going to have full access behind our home and up the side of our property, plus we need to see some restrictions for the rest of these lots, because the lots that they're cutting in there, we don't see restrictions for them. I'm hoping that they maintain the same ones, three thousand square foot and up, but that, you know, evidently could be changed, I don't know how that works, but the people of the Cove are the Architectural Control, all of us, and we all have a vote, and everyone we've talked to does not, they don't like the narrow lots, they don't like the short forty-foot setback from the street. It just doesn't go along with the rest of the neighborhood at all, so.
And the slope development gets in the hand if you go up any further back, because it goes up in the mountain, you know, it's gonna be slope development.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Are there any, anyone else to speak to item two? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Item number three, Cross Creek, Phase Five. Is there anyone to speak to item number three? Ma'am, please go to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, my name is Lucy Albert, and I live at 1279 Capshaw Road. And I guess I just have a concern, and I've had a concern, about the traffic on Capshaw Road. I mean, in the morning, trying to get out of our driveway is just absolutely absurd to try to get out of there, and now there's gonna be an opening almost across from our property of a new housing area for people to get in and out, and I just wanted it stated for the record that the traffic there is awful, and, you know, we've got speeders and a lot of traffic in the morning that back up past our house from Walterian all the way past Capshaw, I mean on Clutz Road.
All right. Any comments regarding the actual subdivision?
The subdivision, no.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Edward Moore.
I'm Keith Moore.
We're at 1226 Capshaw Road and 1210 Capshaw Road.
Our problem is we have a serious drainage issue that's, the subdivisions, and this one is just adding to it, that comes right across our property, and it just literally floods us out. We've been flooded out for the last several years now, and now that they've cleared the property, we can tell that the water's increased a lot. The rain we had a couple weeks ago, we had no less than eighteen inches of water over the access bridge to that rear property. The whole area looked like.
A hundred and fifty feet wide.
You know, the area already has drainage issues, and now we're very concerned about them adding this to us and adding the more water. I know they've got, and we've looked at the drainage layouts, and they look, every one of them is shooting straight towards the drainage that we have now, which is very inadequate.
You, so we have someone from engineering, from foresight, that's spoken to him already?
Yes, we're supposed to speak more, we just.
Okay, if you feel free to speak to him now, I'll leave this public hearing open while you all can step out to, across the hall, and he can share with you their plan. I believe, public hearing, item number three, open, Cross Creek, Phase Four. Is there anyone else to speak to Cross Creek, Phase, I'm sorry, Phase Five, item number three? Okay, we'll leave that public hearing open. Moving to item number four, Inspiration on Green Mountain, Phase Four. Is there anyone to speak to this item, Inspiration on Green Mountain, Phase Four? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jim Barnett, 13240 South Shoddy Road, up on Green Mountain, and you were up there last month at the Volunteer Fire Department.
Yes.
We appreciate you coming up and giving your talk.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Jenny Robinson for being here, and she's been a big supporter of the Green Mountain community. And what I wanted to speak about was, you know, that Woodland Homes, the developer is just going, what I call crazy, developing things up there and doing away with the beauty of the mountain. If you look at the lots he's got on the north end of South Shoddy, and then I understand he's got more lots down on the south end of Shoddy that's in the county, that he's just overdeveloping the mountain. And, you know, there's, in my mind, there's, it was originally zoned other things, other areas for other reasons, to keep, to keep the beauty of it, it's, it's on the, the east side is on the slope, and then if you look back in history, there's been people that have fallen off that slope, and I think one youngster died on that, and then as long as you're talking about safety, you know, that road going up Green Mountain, Green Mountain Road is treacherous at best right now. It's, it's thin, you know, it's narrow, but with the development that has gone on by Woodland Homes and the continued development that I see on the plans, there's gonna be trucks running up there all day long. If you go up the mountain and get behind the concrete truck, it's gonna take you forever.
Jim, have you, have you had a moment to speak to the developer or engineers available tonight? Okay.
They're probably not even listening, so.
Okay, well, I can leave this public hearing open if you can, once they finish.
I wanted to say a couple more things.
Okay.
You know, he's, he's developing, Woodland Homes, in his credit, they produce what I consider fine homes, but if you go up there and look at them, they're very close together. You know, you can spit and hit the neighbor's house, and there's no sewage up there, as most of you know, so I'm wondering how he's getting approval to put septic tanks for all those houses so close together, so close to the woods, so close, close to the slopes, and it's, it's amazing to me. I wish we would have, you know, I don't like the state of California, but in some cases, I would like to leave some green space around the city, and with all the development he's doing, there's not, not gonna be enough trees. All the deer that I see every day are gonna be gone, forced away, and, you know, it's just a sad state of affair that some people are only interested in the almighty dollar. Okay? And I'm sure the city council, you know, we're up on Green Mountain, we're kinda out of sight, out of mind, you've come up there, I know Jenny's come up there, but I don't know how many of the rest of you have been up there, but it's a nice area. People come up there on the weekends, go to the Nature Trail, have a good time, and when you start adding more homes, more traffic, you know, God forbid, they have a, a serious incident up there where they need to get an ambulance up there to take care of somebody because that road is, is in sad shape.
I will leave this public hearing open, Jim, so that you'll have time to speak to the developer once he's finished with the previous public hearing, and then we will close it after you've had a chance to speak with him.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We will leave item number four open. Moving to item number five, McMullen Cove Enclave. Is there anyone to speak to item number five, McMullen Cove Enclave? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Item number six, McMullen Cove Silo Hill, Phase Two. Is there anyone here to speak to McMullen Cove Silo Hill, Phase Two? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Item number seven, McMullen Cove Stratford, Phase Two. Is there anyone to speak to McMullen Cove Stratford, Phase Two? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Item number eight, Mill Run at Hampton Cove, Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Lot One of Mill Run at Hampton subdivision, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak to that item? Yes, sir? Please give us your name and address for the record.
Wallace Dorning at 3215 Waterman, 35763, 8488. When I look at this, I see on number eight, and then I flip over and I look at number ten, and it says Mill Run at Hampton Cove, Phase Two, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I wanna be heard on one of these two. You ready for it now, or do you want me to wait?
Yes, yes, this is the time for the public to speak.
To get into, to Stoneley Terrace, you have to go to Mill Run. Now, Mill Run runs north and south. South is Eastern Bypass. Now, if I understand things correctly, these two lots are going to be developed, but you're going to come out on to Mill Run, not on to Eastern Bypass. I would ask that there be a traffic study done because that is going to put a bottleneck, especially in the morning and in the afternoon, there's probably four to five hundred homes back in, off of Mill Run. So my request is, or my question is, has there been a traffic study, and why didn't it go out on Eastern Bypass rather than Mill Run?
Is there someone here from Smith Engineering? Yes. Can we connect the two so that you can see the plan?
I've already talked to Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith was very gracious in talking to me, but he said they, they decided that whoever they, they are, decided that they'd come on to Mill Run, which I don't think is acceptable if you were to go to the neighborhood and would drive into Mill Run and look where the main entrance to this, whatever it may be, is going to be.
Is there someone from Traffic available? Okay, all right. Do we have the? Yes, please.
There's a Lot A and a Lot B. Lot A is to the west, Lot B is the one that it refers to, that comes off of Mill Run. Traffic Engineering required them to put a note on Lot B that it can't be, it's a three-acre piece, it's the smaller of the two pieces, that it can't, cannot be built on until a right-in, right-out D-cell lane is constructed on Eastern Bypass. So, so that Traffic did want the traffic coming off for the main lot, the seven-acre lot, coming off through Mill Run.
Okay.
That does not answer my question. I'm talking about Mill Run, whereas this, whatever it may be, is going to come out on to Mill Run, not on to Eastern Bypass.
Right, Michael, will you repeat that again, please?
Traffic wanted, wanted them to come out, out of Mill Run, the seven-acre lot. They didn't want them having access to Sutton right there.
Okay.
Eastern Bypass.
That's on the first lot, what about the second lot?
And that's the lot they restricted to require a-cell, D-cell lane, and so it can't be built on until a, a cell, D-cell lane is built.
So that will not occur until that road improvement will be completed?
We keep, we keep talking about nothing but Eastern Bypass, which is a four-lane divided highway. Mill Run is a one-lane going north, one-lane going south residential street. Eastern Bypass is a commercial drive for tractor-trailer trucks or whatever going from point A to point B.
Correct.
But I am still not, I, I don't understand why we have to run a, whatever it may be going to be built there.
Traffic has, that, that is the information that we have received from Traffic, barring this public hearing, we would need to share with you the in-depth plans from, from Traffic, separate from today.
Do you think I might be able to get that, sir?
Michael, is that what you're holding?
I can show him the plat and explain it.
He has the information there.
Norwood, you're telling me that this, this old saying goes as a done deal?
No, what I'm saying, this is the public hearing, and to answer your question, we have the in-depth information there, Mr. Webb is holding, that we're more than happy to share with you and show you.
Thank you, sir.
Not a problem. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Billy Smith from Smith Engineering, and just, the, the planning on that, I believe it's Lot B, that's the seven-acre lot, and there's Lot A left over, which will continue to be owned, owned by the Hayes family. The Lot B is, is being, is up for sale to a developer that is going to place a, an assisted living facility on that seven-acre lot. The, it currently, there is a site plan that has been prepared by my office that is, it doesn't, it's just one single building going on this lot, and so it's not a requirement of the city to bring that before the Planning Commission, but it is a requirement that all the departments review that plan. That plan is currently being reviewed by the City of Huntsville right now. Being the first person, first division to review that is Traffic Engineering, and it's, and it's being reviewed by the city engineer. I think McGuffey's Office and Fire Marshal, various, various departments are reviewing that set of plans right now, so it is in review. As far as the, the, the Lot B, which is the assisted living is, the developer has chose to use an existing entrance right there on Mill Run that is, is located there. They at one time considered having a alternate entrance or an emergency entrance on Eastern, Eastern Bypass, but they chose not to put that in, but we have also worked with the Traffic Engineering Department on this plan from the very concept. Also, we've worked with the Fire Marshals, and of course, their concern is access for, if you did have a major fire, their concern is access for their fire engines, the large heavy ladder trucks, and they have reviewed this, this information and really see no problem of accessing from, from Mill Run Road into the, this facility. I don't expect, I, I can't remember the number, I'm sorry, but I don't recall the number of units, apartment-type units in here, but I don't expect this, this facility to generate a large volume of traffic in and out of that area. I just would be, it's just not typical of that being. There will be people going in and out. There will be delivery trucks taking food and various things into the area, but I don't consider it a high volume. Most people living there are, are retired people already, so they're not, they're not gonna be back and forth to that neighborhood, but, you know, if you, if he's still concerned about it, you know, he could probably meet with the Traffic Engineering people if, I would make that suggestion if you'd like to. Mr. Dan Sanders is Chief Traffic Engineering, and I'm sure they'd be glad to talk with you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
This is Robert Ogden at 3004 The Green Court. I'm an adjacent property to the subject of Mill Run, and I have prepared my statement with not enough copies given to everyone, but you're welcome to one at last if you're, if you're interested in it, but I have prepared to address some concerns of the approval of the subject change of plats from the named subdivision and the adjacent residential properties. It has been said, although not confirmed, that a building is planned to be built on one of the plots as an assisted living, so, and Mr. Smith there just confirmed that while ago, and I was working off of rumors, and I didn't want to report that, but I have listed some of the concerns that me and the neighbors that are adjacent to that area have concerns with, and we would like the Planning Commission at least to consider part of those, if not done under this action, be done under another action later. In Article 20, the purpose of the landscape buffer yards is, quote, "to shield the nearby residents from the disruptions associated with commercial operations." Now, as part of that, we have a concern with the proposed two-story building, and Mr. Smith has told me that part of that building would require a step back on the, the first building, that, that appreciates other of it, but it does not do away with our concern of the loss of privacy on our patio homes, which are zero lot lines on, immediately adjacent to this property. And if, if some consideration by the developer or by the Planning Commission, either one, would, would bar any upper windows and, and part of that to, to give us some privacy that even the Planning Commission has, in, in the development of this document, recognizes that it does impact us. Paragraph 20.5.4.3 states that the owner or the leasing or his agents shall be responsible for providing, maintaining, the landscaping, and et cetera, et cetera. I've lived in this residence since July of 2001, and I cannot recall any maintenance. In fact, I have implored the Homeowners Association to get the current property owner to comply. He supposedly refused, refused, and I have not personally talked to him, but he did consent for us to do the trimming on our side of the buffer. Well, thank you, I'm seventy-four years old, and I'm too old to be climbing fences and to get over there. So the current landscaping has taken over most of the designated drainage right away. In fact, some areas has created a tunnel over our fences where we have a joint easement for drainage that equals the, the easement that Mr. Hayes has on the other side, which gives us a ten-foot spread between that and, and the buffer zone, and that is all taken up by, by the trees and the bushes and the iliangus and, and whatever there, so I would, I would at least let, ask that you consider that as for future development, if not us, as somebody else. But I would like to make a, a statement that the current buffer is effective in reducing the highway noise, and I know that's the purpose of it originally. But I talked to, oh, I can't remember the, the latest name, Marie Bostich, before she left here, and I was asking her about that, I said, "I know the Planning Commission requires that buffer zone to be there, but was it anything put in the ordinance that required the owner of that property to maintain it?" And she says she wasn't aware of any, but I found, I found the section, paragraph 20 up here, that looks to me like it does apply. And I, I would propose that either the subdivision committee or the Planning Commission themselves instruct the current owner or future owners of the required condition of maintaining that buffer. And I am not proposing that they take it down, I'm just saying cut the trees and the trash out of it and get it where it's manageable.
So, sir, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, because you mentioned earlier Article 20 regarding landscape, so that it's high enough for a two-story building, and then now you're saying you want it trimmed. Are these two separate places on the parcel, or is this the same space?
Well, it's my understanding that the building plat of the building was gonna be up against the buffer line for, for the, for the buffer back there, and this iliangus at this time currently, I would, I haven't measured it, but it, they have a fifteen-foot buffer zone for, for the iliangus, and I would say it's close to twenty-five to thirty feet across.
So it would, you're saying that it needs to be taller?
It, it, it needs to be, the buffer zone is tall enough. It's eighteen feet tall in some respects, but it's got trees and bushes and trash and everything else that we could get in there, and it's so, I, I cannot do the maintenance on my fence for the, for not being able to get to it.
Is some, is the developer or the engineer here for this project available? Is that also Billy, Billy Smith? Billy, if, if you and, I'm sorry, Mr. Robert can, can speak, I'll leave this public hearing open so that you can share your concerns with him, okay? Mr. Smith, if you'll step out in the hallway there with Mr. Robert, you all can, you can share that information with him. Thank you. We'll leave public, item eight, open, to gain clarity on that. Item nine, Newson Fairview addition, re-subdivision of Lot One and Three Block Twenty, a minor, has been withdrawn. There's someone to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You'll give us your name and address, Ms. Jackie? I appreciate it.
Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. I've got a big concern when I see neighbors, I mean, I live in everybody's neighborhood in this whole city, but when someone comes in this planning department and everybody hadn't seen what they're asking for about that Mill Run and hadn't got that worked out, we know what engineering says, we know what Traffic says. Were these people not invited to these meetings and be a part of all of this before you all sit up here and make a decision to vote on such a thing?
Yes, ma'am, as you know, we have committee meetings prior to Planning Commission, so they would have, notice would have been received for committee meetings and for, for Planning Commission.
So that's why they're here. Everybody was in on the traffic studies and the planning and the zoning and.
The traffic study, traffic studies are available if needed to be reviewed. If there's a question, they are free to review those with planning staff.
It's not for me, it's for these other people.
No, no, and that's why we're encouraging, I've paired several people to speak with the engineers.
I know, but you know, going outside and speaking to two or three seconds and trying to make a deal outside in this planning department, to me, that's not the way to do business.
No, I've left public hearing open for items three, four, and eight.
Yeah.
And so we will wait until the engineering or representative and the resident comes back in before we will close those items. So they are still open.
What you need to do, in my opinion, is postpone this and lay it all up on the table as to where those apartments, that complex and everything's going to come in and out of, where that road's going to go, and do your homework before you sit up there and pass it. They can't deal outside in a few seconds with a few developers.
We're giving more than a few seconds.
I mean, we need to change the planning department's agenda items, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak on item number nine, which has been withdrawn? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 10, Oak Grove at Farley Farm, a re-subdivision of Lot 1 of Farley Farm, which has also been withdrawn. Is there anyone here to speak to item 10 that's been withdrawn? Public hearing is, is closed on items nine and 10. Open, will stay open for nine and 10 although they've been withdrawn. We will move to item 11, Plantation Park, a re-subdivision of Carriage Station. Is there anyone to speak to item 11? Plantation Park, re-subdivision of Carriage Station. Seeing none, item 11 is now closed. Item 12, The Preserve at Wheeler, re-subdivision of a part of Track 3A of Williams Wheeler Estates. Item 12, The Preserve at Wheeler. Is there anyone here to speak to item 12? Item 12 is now closed, seeing none. Item 13, location, character, extent. Item 14A is the Benton A Wilcox and Municipal Ice Complex Locker Room Edition. Is there anyone here to speak to item A of location, character, extent? Seeing none, that item is now closed. Item B of location, character, extent is the Batson Blacksmith Shop, Burrit on the Mountain. Anyone here to speak to item B of location, character, extent?
Can, maybe, can you explain something like what they're asking for and what's going to be done on this?
On item B?
Yes, sir.
Yes, is the, is there someone, a representative here to speak to the Burrit on the Mountain addition? Do we have that graphic or?
Stating on Batson Blacksmith Shop. This item was brought to us, this, the Blacksmith Shop was removed from a previous parcel somewhere within Madison County. This Blacksmith Shop has been placed, or will be placed, on the Burrit on the Mountain property. It was a log cabin. These logs have been categorized and will be placed back in its original in a new setting along Burrit on the Mountain. Each position was marked and will be developed for a future Blacksmith Shop on Burrit on the Mountain. This is a request by Mr. Batson and also the Burrit on the Mountain themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is that, okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak to item B, Batson Blacksmith Shop on Burrit? Yes, sir, if you'll give us your name and address for the record.
Edward Moore on the 1226 Capshaw Road. We're just outside talking to the builder and the engineer over that, about the water situation on Capshaw Road and that area right there, Cross Creek. We, they understand what our problem is and I think they're going to handle it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else to speak on item three, Cross Creek Phase 5? Seeing none, that item is now closed. No further comments for Batson Blacksmith Shop at Burrit. That item is now closed. Moving to zoning, Green Mountain rezoning. Is there anyone to speak on the Green Mountain rezoning? Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
I'm Beverly Humphrey, Vice President of the Green Mountain Civic League. I reside at 14096 Mottevedra Road on Green Mountain. I just wanted to remind you all the fact that we're not objecting to this rezoning from R2 to R1. But to remind you that this should not set a precedent for any more rezoning on Green Mountain that would lower the requirements, only to better the requirements would we support. So just putting you on notice.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly. It's good to see you. Yes, sir, will you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir, my name is Thomas Henderson. My residence is 13028 South Village Square Road. This is my father, he is my adjacent neighbor to me. His name is Ronald C. Henderson. Address 13042 South Village Square Road. Wanted, not until you pop the map up there. I just wanted to ensure that the rezoning of the 3.19 acres was indeed the shaded area and not the map that I had previously received. So it all looks good.
Thank you.
I'll mention that when I do the presentation, but it has been removed.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else to speak on item B of zoning, I'm sorry, item A, Green Mountain rezoning? Seeing none, that public hearing is now closed. Item B? Oh, go forward.
The Green Mountain rezoning is approximately 3.19 acre. The property is located on the west side of South Shawty Road and on the north and south sides of South Village Square. The property is currently zoned Residence 2A. This zoning designation has been existing since 1963. In previous rezonings, we have had opposition from several neighbors that would like to see this multifamily residential district go away. So this is a city-imposed rezoning. We did mail out courtesy notices prior to our April zoning committee meeting to all affected residents, and we were only contacted by Mr. Henderson as well as his father. The first rezoning was 7.66 acres. Mr. Henderson requested that his property, which is located in here, where I'm scrolling, he requested that his property be removed. So that left a remaining 3.19 acre. Mr. Henderson is also in agreeance with a future rezoning request, removing the C1A property from his particular parcel. So he has no opposition to that.
Ma'am, and would we be able to, for changing that last little thumbnail, C1A, change that to R21A since that's also on our property? That blue strip there? Since that is on our property and not on the adjacent lot.
This is the, the purple is the C1A that Mr. Henderson is not in opposition with planning staff taking future action on.
Thank you. Any other comments? Public hearing is closed. Item B, zoning ordinance amendment, farmer's market, Ashley?
This zoning ordinance amendment is a proposed ordinance to add language concerning farmer's markets. Currently, within our zoning ordinance, there is no language concerning farmer's markets. They all seek a variance in order to operate. With this proposed ordinance, it will add a definition for farmer's markets as well as add farmer's markets as a permitted use under most of our heavy commercial and industrial districts as well as our medical districts. And that includes our general business C3, which includes downtown, highway business C4, light and heavy industry, medical district, and medical district 2, also our airport commercial district and our commercial industrial park. Also, this proposed ordinance will add farmer's markets in our residential and neighborhood business districts as a special exception. Under the special exception, the farmer's markets will be required to go forth to the Board of Zoning Adjustment and get permission. And they will just spell out all of their conditions to make sure there is no conflict with their use in the adjacent residential dwellings.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the zoning ordinance amendment regarding farmer's markets? Yes, ma'am.
In changing this ordinance ever so, they have to go before the zoning board to get permission for the farmer's markets to be set up. Does this right here not change that they can go set them up anywhere they want to?
The Board of Zoning Adjustment request is only for our residential and neighborhood business districts. Most of our current farmer's markets, they're all located mainly at churches. Most of those churches are found within residential neighborhoods. So this not only protects the farmer's market, but it also protects the adjacent residential subdivisions. So they can't just set up wherever they want to without being within one of these particular zones.
Do they have to notify the neighbors before they do all this kind of things?
If, if they are required to have a special exception, which would include the residential and neighborhood business, yes, ma'am. They would have to notify neighbors within a 500-foot radius.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to keep, keep up with everything.
That's a good thing, right, thank you, Ms. Reed. Any other comments on zoning ordinance amendment, farmer's market? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Kyle, if you'll give us the subdivision committee report. Oh, I'm sorry, I still have two public hearings open, items number four and items number eight. Are we, are they back for, are they still over there? Okay, okay, all right. I will, no one else to speak to item number four, Inspiration on Green Mountain Phase 4? Public hearing is now closed. And for item eight, the Mill Run at Hampton Cove Phase 2, re-subdivision of Lot 1, Mill Road. We'll give them some, some more time. Would you like to speak? Yes, if you could, please come to the mic and give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Judith Gibson, I own the property 3010 The Green Court, which is the first house behind this Lot B. It's the corner of Green Court and Mill Run. I don't know if it has been stated, but Mill Run, besides being a narrow street, which has a curve as you enter to the first street, is also a dead end. There's no way in or out except through Mill Run 2, Highway 431 bypass. With all the houses back there, I think you all have heard that there will be a lot of congestion, the congestion will be unbearable. There is no way for these people with all the needs of their families to go in and out without going to Mill Run. With the access in the location where it is now, it historically was not an access. There was a little spot there, the little driveway where the men who were doing the yard work would park when they weren't working. One day, a street sign showed up. We don't know why, but it is not a very safe, accessible entrance to this lot. I don't know if I got the wrong information, but I was told, what understood to be said was that this will be the main entrance to the front of the building, which made me think that the front of the building will be facing Mill Run, which means the side of the building will be facing 431. This will not be attractive. If this property, if this building faces Highway 431 bypass, it will be in the same design as everything else on that street. You'll have the fronts facing, not the backs or the sides. Another thing that you said was that the homeowners were given notice of this object happening. Never have I gotten any kind of notice. Some little bird dropped some information out in the neighborhood and the discussion has started, and someone notified me that there was something happening there. It took us a long time before we found out what was happening there. And now we're told it's a three-story assisted living home, which will be bringing a lot of other problems. The main thing that I'm concerned about now is the access, what it will look like from the highway. Will it look like a sore spot that will take away from the value of our properties? But be aware, whatever traffic has said, I don't think traffic went to the end of the street, that's all, there is no other exit. We dead end into the back of the Hampton House tennis courts. And those people need to have access to and from their homes. Thank you.
Let me clarify that notice is 500, two property owners adjacent within 500 feet.
Well, I meant adjacent like this. I never had gotten a notice. I'm on the corner, directly behind this lot, touching it. I have never received any kind of notice.
Thank you. Any other comments for item eight?
I'd just like to clarify something that when I was talking to Mr. Smith. The Eliangus problem I was talking about was the width that existed, not the height of it.
Okay.
And he, I gave him a copy of this and the other issues that I have are very short and quick. I'd like to go and cover those real quickly.
Okay, if you could.
She covered the overflow parking. And anything that comes up on the Green Court to park that is going to have business somewhere else will interrupt the US Postal flow. It's just no way for somebody to park in a car unless somebody motions to make sure you get enough room between the mailboxes and that to allow the mail person to come in. They're not the most flexible people to work with that I ever saw either. But, and I think all of my other issues have been, been pretty much addressed through Mr. Smith, and I gave him a copy of this. I asked him to personally work with the developer and to make sure that the outside lighting was in compliance because I feel like that if the outside lighting is in compliance, that we won't have a problem with it either. So, and I'd like to re-add some, say, I'm not objecting to the, the building of, of the assisted living. It's, it's the unknown factor more than anything else going on. And then these issues here, I think, would apply to any of the areas which you have buffers going to make sure that everybody understands that they do have the requirement to maintain those.
Thank you. No one else on item eight? I will consider, item, are you to speak to item eight?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Wallace Dunning, 3215 Waterman Drive. As the gentleman just said, the unknown is what is the problem here. I, I believe the lady said she didn't get a notice. I know other people on that street didn't get a notice. And I'm talking about they back up to this property. I have no idea how that happened. What I'm just saying that I am not against, and I don't think any neighbors is against, what is proposed to go on that lot. It is just the fact that it was a very kept surprise.
Michael, do we, do we have the addresses? Can you show, show, share that with the, with the property owners? Ms. Gibson and Mr. Ogden. Planning staff has provided to, to me the certified mail receipts that we sent out for notification to you. And I do have those certified receipt numbers, if you would be interested in those, to show that we did send that out by certified mail. They were not returned to us. Yeah, you would have received a little notice in your mail if you weren't home, and then you would have to go to the post office to sign for it, to pick it up. This way, we're able to track what we send. That's why we, we send them certified. So that would have been sent to appears to be six total property owners. The address, the property address of 3010 Green, The Green Cove, The Green Court Southeast, I'm sorry. And then Mr. Ogden is 3004 The Green Court.
I am the property owner, I don't live there. On the tax records, you have my mailing address, contact number for anything that has to do with that property. So, it should have been sent to the owner of the property, not the tenant.
We send notifications to the, the property, we, we don't track with the tax office, those, we send it directly to, to that property.
I didn't understand.
The information that's listed at the courthouse is the mailing information that we use.
Yeah. The owner.
Yes.
Owner doesn't live at that address.
Unfortunately, we wouldn't have had a way to, to know that, I do apologize for that.
Should know it.
If there are any other comments for item eight, public hearing on item eight is now closed. Kyle, if you'll give us the subdivision report, please.
Subdivision committee met on May the twentieth. Following recommendations, item number one, Cambridge subdivision Phase Two is forwarded without recommendation pending approval from the City Engineer Division.
Is there a motion? Oh, Michelle, is it in order?
Approval has been granted by the Engineering Division, and it is now in order for relayout and preliminary approval.
Move to approve.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, The Cove Second Edition, resubdivision of lots nine F and nine E of a resubdivision of Lot Nine D, of a resubdivision of Lot Nine B, of a resubdivision of Lot Nine of The Cove, and resubdivision of Lot Ten of The Cove. Committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on ten lots with the following modification: cul-de-sac length to nine hundred and eighty-five feet with waivers on, non-standard cul-de-sac, curb and gutter, sidewalks with both sides, non-radio and non-perpendicular lot lines between lots one and two, excuse me, lots one through ten, and the angle of the side lot line between lots nine and ten.
Move to approve.
Could I ask a question?
Is there any discussion?
The, the residents raised some concerns about covenants and the need for architectural review. How has the staff addressed that? Do they have application to this issue?
The city, the planning commission is not concerned with private restrictive covenants. That would be a private civil matter between the property owners out there, as to the, the effect of the covenants, the application of the covenants, and the enforcement of the covenants. They are private covenants for the developer, the property owners out there.
So the architectural review that they're referring to would only apply if a, an existing residence, if someone was doing modifications to the residence?
I don't know what their restrictive covenants say, but the covenants would govern any type of development out there, and the architectural review, review board, and the standards, and the process for applying them.
One other question on this matter, is the property in question under the same covenants and architectural review as the properties that these people live in?
I don't know, we don't deal with private restrictive covenants. The city deals with zoning, the planning commission deals with zoning and subdivisions. When we deal with private restrictive covenants, that's something that a developer imposes on the property as he's developing, developing it, the city cannot enforce private restrictive covenants. That's something that's imposed for the benefit of all the property owners, but that's a very good question, that the owners would have to check with their attorney or with their, the covenants to see if the covenants are imprinted on the entire development, but that's something that would be left to them to check.
So for the purposes of this vote and other votes where this issue was brought up, it's really not up to this body to incorporate that in our decision-making. It's purely based on our subdivision and zoning guidelines, whatever we have, that's law.
Right, when it comes to subdivision approval, basically, the planning commission's action is a ministerial or administrative function. If all underlying ordinances and regulations that are incorporated into the subdivision regs are, are met, then it's in, it's in order for, for approval.
Any further discussion? We've closed public hearing on this matter, but we'll take a courtesy comment. Thank you. Any other discussion from the commission?
Going back to Ms. Battle's comments or earlier question, and Claudia answered affirmatively, the, the stat, this meets all those guidelines. We've looked at traffic, we've looked at the width of the street, we've looked at the capacity of the neighborhood, and, and it fits those guidelines in the, legally and according to the judgment of planning staff.
Yes, it does.
Well, legally, the issue is the application of the underlying ordinance, and that's for the administration of each department that administers those ordinances. So that to the extent that they have approved them, that's what they're saying, is that their approval indicates that those, that subdivision is in compliance with the ordinances they administer.
Any further discussion? Or ready for the question?
One question, the easement that this lady is talking about, is that a new easement on her property? Next to your property?
I'm Jeff Mullins, engineer on project, and it's not an easement right now. There is land behind their property, it's seventy, eighty acres, it's quite a bit of land, and for it to be a legal lot has to have frontage on a right-of-way. So we have a sixty-foot strip that comes down and gives it frontage on the right-of-way.
Thank you. Any further questions from the commission discussion? Alright, call for the que, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, have the same right? Thank you, the motion passes. Do I have a second? I'm sorry. Vince gave a second, you didn't hear it, I'm sorry. Thank you, Kyle, three.
Item number three is Cross Creek Phase Five. The committee recommends relayout approval of seventy-four lots and preliminary approval on sixty-one lots with the following waiver, due to required retaining wall, reduce the utility.
Drainage.
And drainage, I knew I was going to get that. Easement along rear lot lines of Lot One Forty-five and Lot Two O One, the east side of Lot One Forty-five and Lot Two O One, and the west side of Lot One Eighty-five, and the non-radio lot line for Lot Two Twenty-eight and the common area B.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
There were some questions asked regarding traffic concerns and drainage, but it sounds like based on the comments of the citizens that those were resolved.
Yes. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, you have the same right? Thank you, motion passes.
Item number four, Inspiration on Green Mountain Phase Four. The committee recommends preliminary approval on forty-three lots.
Is there a motion? Any discussion?
There were lots of questions raised here that actually I've been asked, have asked the planning staff in the past, and one concerns the capacity of the mountain to continue to develop on a septic system. And I would really love to have some thoughts with the staff, how, because those septic systems have a shelf life of, I think, fifty years, and there's a bunch of houses up there that are approaching that, or have exceeded it probably, and then if you add more development closely spaced together, I, I think we're gonna, at what point do we say this isn't going to work anymore?
Michael, can you answer that? Okay, great, Jerry, we'll.
Good evening, Jerry Cargill, Civil Engineer, Forsight. Geo Solutions is actually the consultant that's doing the design for the septic systems on this, and this project was held for an additional month, was up for approval last month, but had to be pulled because the Health Department had not yet signed off on the septic design for that. That's happened since then. All I can say with respect to that is certainly, maybe something that the city wants to look at long-term. These are typical of the size lots that you would find in a development with septic systems, and meets the criteria that the Health Department sets forth for those. We're certainly not in a position, though, to give a detailed, you know, answer as to what, you know, fifty, a hundred years down the road. All we can say is that it, it certainly meets the criteria for the Health Department, and there are alternatives for failed systems, to do an engineered system design to accommodate those requirements, you know, if, if that becomes the case. But this is typical of the size lots you would see for septic.
And, and again, I guess we're at that point where we've checked all the boxes, and we can say, you know, we're, we're in compliance, but Jerry raises an interesting point, do we need to look long-term at the mountain? I, I mean, as far as I can tell with regard to Mr. Friday, he would be happy to build Hampton Cove up on top of Green Mountain, and I don't know that it can sustain, couldn't sustain that. So, could, could the staff look at long-term projections of the capacity of the mountain to handle a septic system? I don't think anyone at this point wants to entertain putting a sewer system in up there, we all have bad memories of Montecristo, and, you know, or I don't know, maybe that is the long-term plan, that technology is such that maybe we could do that, but it's going to be very expensive.
Right, well, we do, as Jerry stated, rely on the county for their input and their approval of, of septic systems, but sure, staff would be happy to look at, at future plans for Green Mountain.
Then the other issue that was raised was, was with regard to green space. We're trying very hard to protect green space throughout the city, and we have one of the most beautiful pieces of green space in the city up there on Green Mountain. So the question then is, what are we going to do to protect that green space? And does the staff plan, again, in terms of looking at a long-range plan for Green Mountain, how do we protect that green space up there? I mean, I can see a lot of people getting very excited to build homes up there, because who wouldn't want to be living up there, but you have capacity issues with regard to traffic and the roads and the sewers, and then simply maintaining the green space. So it may be time to just take a look at the future of Green Mountain and what we can do as a city to, to develop responsibly up there.
Sure, we can, we can talk to the property owners and make sure that we understand their plans for, for their property, but a part of this development does include a little over seventy-two acres of green space being saved.
That's good to know.
So, sure, we can continue to dialogue with the property owners on Green Mountain about their future plans and be a part of that conversation.
And I, I guess I recognize also that if we have, if the zoning permits, then, and you have someone who wants to develop, and they're, again, checking all the boxes, that you can't stand in, in the way of the, the rights of that individual to do that, but at the same time, we need to make some smart decisions about how we develop Green Mountain. So if we could just keep that in mind and have those conversations, I would be grateful.
Sure.
Any other discussion on item four? All in favor? Opposed have the same right? It's, motion passes?
Item number five is Limestone Creek Apartments. Committee recommends preliminary approval on three hundred and twelve units.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right? Hearing none, motion carries.
Item number six, McMullen Cove Enclave. The committee recommends relayout approval on a hundred and eight lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, forty-two, forty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-five, fifty-six, and the angle of the side lot line between lots eighteen and twenty.
Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, is there a motion? Your second, thank you, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right? Hearing none, motion passes.
Item number seven, McMullen Cove Silo Hill Phase One, presented for final approval on twenty-two lots.
Michelle, is it in order for final approval on twenty-two lots?
Yes, it's in order with improvements in sidewalks to be installed by May eighteenth, twenty sixteen.
Move to approve.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Item number eight, McMullen Cove Silo Hill Phase Two. The committee recommends relayout approval on fifty-seven lots and preliminary approval on fifteen lots with the following waiver: non-radio lot lines between lots thirty-three and thirty-four, and the angle of the side lot line between Lot Thirty-nine and the common area, and the following modification: cul-de-sac length to one thousand one hundred and thirty feet along Brennan Hill, twelve hundred feet along Taylor's Brook Way, forty feet right-of-way, and twenty-two foot pavement along Brennan Hill.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine, McMullen Cove Stratford Phase Two. The committee recommends relayout and preliminary approval on thirty lots.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number ten is Mill Run at Hampton Cove Phase Two, resubdivision of Lot One of Mill Run at Hampton subdivision, it's a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on angle of the side lot line between lots A and B.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would, do have a question, how, how big is both lots together right now that's being divided? How large is it?
A little over ten.
Ten.
Ten acres.
Okay, so it's ten acres, and it's being divided plus or minus seven and three. The seven-acre lot is where this assisted living is going, and then, if I understood from all this discussion, that the three-acre lot has to have an A-cell and a D-cell lane before it can be developed at all.
Correct.
Okay, but there is no access, ingress, egress, onto 431 from the seven-acre lot? And there's no zoning change to this? Right, it's just a subdividing an existing zone?
Well, that, that's actually leading into my question. So for the purposes of the assisted living complex, will it require a zoning change after we divide it? Not at all? So, because it's an assisted living complex, it's essentially a apartment complex, so there will be no public hearing for that when it comes up.
Jimmy, you said you didn't know how many units there would be? That's a good question, is there a reason why it's not going to face 431?
Well, it's actually facing at an angle.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
So after it's divided, you'll come back and present the layout for it, I assume? No, nothing, nothing at all, right.
Really, where will the front be?
It's on an angle.
It's a square, it, I'm sorry, a triangle shape, and so you'll see it from both sides. Michael has it there. Yes, I've seen it, yes.
It sort of parallels that back a little bit, so it's going, it, it's, it's not, the whole building will not be three sewers, but part of it will fit into this two.
Will it just be rooms, Michael?
Well, they have facilities there, dining facilities.
Yeah, I know, but basically, it's going to be each tenant will have one room and a bathroom, that type of thing.
It may be more than one room.
One unit?
Yeah, one unit.
It's a unit.
But my, my point is, nothing has changed about the zoning, there's not been a variance, and nothing has come before. They're just dividing the lots.
That's right.
Got it.
Any other discussion on item ten?
Yeah, I have a, a question. We, this body doesn't have anything to do with landscaping or maintenance, but the city does have a body, community development, that could address the maintenance issue of the Eli Agnes. Is, is that correct?
That is correct. I've made, and I will make a note of that for community development.
Any other discussion on item ten? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, those opposed have the same right? Hearing, uh, first part of item ten passes. This is also presented for final approval on two lots. Michelle, is it in order for final?
Yes, it's in order.
Any discussion regarding the final? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes on final approval.
Item eleven, Oak Grove at Farley Farm Phase Four, re-subdivision Lot One of Farley Farm, presented for final approval on twelve lots.
Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, this is presented for final approval, Michelle.
Yes, it's in order with improvements in sidewalks to be installed by May thirteenth, twenty sixteen.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right? Hearing none, motion passes.
Item number twelve, Plantation Park, re-subdivision of Carriage Station. The committee recommends relayout approval on two hundred and fifty-six lots and pre, re-preliminary approval on ninety-three lots of, with the following waiver: triple-fronted Lot One and Thirty-Six, and double-fronted Lots Two through Seven, Thirty through Thirty-five, one ninety-seven through two forty-nine, and the following modification: cul-de-sac length to one thousand eighty-two point four feet along Plantation Park Drive.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right? Motion passes.
Item number thirteen, The Preserve at Wheeler, re-subdivision of a part of Track Three A of Williams Wheeler Estates. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on one hundred and seventy lots.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Location, character, and extent. Item number one, Benton H. Wilcoxen Municipal Ice Complex Locker Room Edition. Public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
This is the project, Kelly, that is a public-private partnership, and so the plans will be approved, but the money still has to be raised by the Ice Complex Board.
Here we go. It was my understanding this particular piece was in place to go.
Okay, good.
Is that correct?
So it's still just the sheet of ice that?
Right, right. This is just that little locker room addition that I think we were less enthralled with the design, but...
This will be the building that will connect the future.
With the other one. Right, okay, got it.
Any dis, further discussion?
The, I would only say, Mr. Chairman, that I would, uh, don't know I have this right, but it, it was presented to us with a metal siding, and I had recommended a masonry siding.
Do we know if that has been reviewed or consideration, change?
Thank you. The, um, the concerns were heard, um, and so duly noted. I don't know that, that the design has changed.
And I don't know that we can make them change. I just wanted to get on the record for saying that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Item number two, The Batson Blacksmith Shop Bureau on the Mountain. Public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We will take the zoning committee report.
Uh, this, uh, I'm Les Tillery, Chairman of the Zoning Committee. Uh, the zoning committee meeting was held on May the thirteenth, twenty fifteen, and these are our recommendations. Item one, Green Mountain rezoning. The public hearing was held this evening.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I would, uh, call your, uh, attention to the comments that Ms. Humphrey made, which I think need to be kept in mind that any future rezoning on Green Mountain needs to make it better, and this is certainly one of those cases taking, where we're taking R-two to, uh, Residence One, uh, and I hope that the remaining R-two on Green Mountain, that those who, uh, own that property would certainly consider, uh, moving from a multifamily to a single family. Again, going back to the concerns expressed earlier, that as we increase the number of people up on the mountain, we increase the challenges for traffic, for sewage, for, and threaten green space, and R-two would only exacerbate that problem.
Any further discussion?
I have one question. I heard at one point that this was a city-initiated change. What, what, what is the city planning to do with the, the land up there? What are they hoping for development-wise?
It's, um, still, it, we don't own the property, but, um, it eliminates a, a zone that, um, the neighborhood and, and the city, um, felt was appropriate to, to eliminate on this, in this part of, part of the city.
Any further discussion?
I, I would just like to say, um, that I appreciate the city taking that measure to, to correct something that they felt would make, or to do something that they felt would make this part of town better. That, that speaks, speaks well.
I appreciate it too, but I've seen things come through and then something else happens later on. So I was trying to get ahead of the something else that could be happening later on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right? Item one passes. Les?
Yes, uh, item two, zoning ordinance amendment, Farmers Markets. Bear with me. This, this amends zoning ordinance Article Three, definitions, amends Article twenty-three, General Business C-three District Regulations, Sections twenty-three point one, uses permitted. Article twenty-four, Highway Business C-four District Regulations, Section twenty-four point one, uses permitted. Article twenty-five, Commercial Recreation C-five District Regulations, Section twenty-five point one, uses permitted. Article forty, Light District Regulations, Section forty point one, uses permitted. Article forty-four, Commercial Industrial Park District Regulations, Section forty-four point one, uses permitted. Article sixty, Medical District Regulations, Section sixty point one, uses permitted. Article sixty-four, Airport Commercial District Regulations, Section sixty-four point one, uses permitted. Article sixty-six, Medical Two District Regulations, Section sixty-six point one, uses permitted, and amends Article ninety-two, Board of Adjustment, Section ninety-two point five point three, permitted uses as special exceptions to add regulations concerning far, uh, Farmers Markets. The public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
I'd like to commend planning staff, uh, for working on this and working with the interested parties as well, uh, on this. Any further discussion?
I, I have a question, um, and this may be confusion on my part, and I acknowledge that upfront. Um, I, I thought I heard that in cases of residential areas, it would require an adjustment or going in front of the Board of Adjustments every time, and so I was trying to figure out why the zoning ordinance couldn't be written such that it didn't require an exception every time.
Well, the thought was, um, and, and Jim might want to speak to this too, but we want to have an opportunity to just review, um, the performance of the farmers market every year, the, the board does, and the neighbors do. Um, while we haven't had any real problems with farmers markets, we don't want it to become a negative for anyone. So, um, we've tried to streamline the process for the farmers markets. We're working on, um, uh, uh, an easy checklist for them to get through the Board of Zoning Adjustment, um, and, you know, correctly document what their activities will be, um, but we, we do want to have that accountability on both the city's part and the farmers market manager part, so that it continues to be a positive activity throughout the city.
Understood and appreciated.
Any further?
The second question is, I just wanted to make sure that didn't impact, I know one of the, I don't know of many residential, most are on churches, but there's one that I thought was purely residential in Terry Heights, the one they started not too long ago. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't impacted by these changes.
No, um, it actually is in partnership with the church as well, and so, um, yes, it will, that farmers market manager will also come before the board and just kind of check off what they want to do during that, um, farmers market year, and, um, you know, hopefully if there are no problems, um, have a favorable outcome with the board.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right? Hearing none, the item passes.
Item number three, Bob Wallace rezoning. The committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for June twenty-third.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing will be set for June twenty-third.
Item four, zoning ordinance amendment, RPC Parking. Amend zoning ordinance Article fifty-three, Research Park Commercial District Regulations, Section fifty-three point five, parking and loading areas, to amend regulations concerning retail parking. The committee re, recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for June twenty-third.
Move to set a public hearing for June twenty-third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Michelle, the invocation and extensions of bonds?
Yes, we recommend the invocation of items one through three.
Is there a motion?
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right? Hearing none, the motion passes. There being no further business to come before this commission, we stand adjourned. Thank you.